Jackie, is that you? If you can hear us okay?
It's me. Good morning. I can hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'm not using the phone as the speaker, so it seems to work out okay.
Would you like to activate my computer?
And the other thing is, like, the arrows here, right? You do this, and that's all you hear. And we're looking at hours, it's our... Well, you can't hear that.
Take that away. Take that away.
Yeah. Got somebody to go afterward?
Just for saving me.
Okay.
This is probably my mistake.
One thirty.
One thirty.
Yep. Stakeholder meeting night. I think it's their vendor. And then Thursday at three o'clock is the meeting with Forest Service and the Titten Road folks regarding the road. If you're interested in that, I'm going to go to it for a little while, but I have another appointment. Yep. At the Forest Service building. I guess so. Unless that changes.
We talked to you messing with the cleanup. Could all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance place?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Changes to the agenda, Bruce?
Chairman, you and Richard have an amended agenda. I haven't noted at the top of it. Everybody else, the agenda as you were given. The additional item is under General Business, the Wasp Road Road District election, which happened on Friday. Otherwise, there are no changes. I would highlight that I think that under the sheriff's time at eight fifteen, there's going to be some discussion to include Greg from ISNT regarding some computer security-related issues. And also under Personnel, I plan to bring up the four-H Coordinator Evaluation, which I think you had in your packet as well. Other than that, no changes.
Okay. Anyone else? Motion to second the table. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Agenda is approved. Any conflicts with today's agenda?
I have a conflict at nine fifteen.
Okay. Are you going to leave the room? Are you going to stay in the room?
I'll leave the table.
Okay. So noted. Regular meetings from the September sixth meeting. Anyone see anything?
Motion approved.
Second. Excellent job. Any other questions or discussion for the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Motion checked. We have approved those minutes. Bills. Anyone have questions on bills? Go ahead, Randy.
Under E nine one one.
Page nine.
Page nine. Motorola Solutions, two hundred and thirty-two thousand and nine seven twenty. That's the new radio system.
It's a full sale, I have three, uh, all of our systems. That represents sixteen percent of the process. It's fully upgraded. We've already paid ninety-six thousand.
I need one.
Forty dollars and fifty cents earlier this year, so the payment was decided to save me a fifty-dollar.
My question is, you paid the City of Spearfish by eleven thousand dollars a month for services associated with this department. And we're paying for all the upgrades without their participation in the upgrades.
Well, actually, Commissioner, they just prior to our initiation of our process, which actually starts a couple of weeks ago, we're doing all the groundwork now, Spearfish has just completed the exact same process, so they, the City of Spearfish has been... I don't know exactly what the City of Spearfish would have been, but it would have been.
Do you understand my point? You give all that money to them, and they have interdepartmental improvements that they don't participate in payment. Seems a little one-sided. I know that it's dedicated for a certain use.
Right. I can explain that to you, but I don't know that necessarily that's how it lays out.
Yeah, that's that tax we collect. Get that back on the search. Yeah.
They get paid for their area they cover. Does that make sense?
I think your concern is, it'd be nice if you still put Spearfish's PSAP, and that's the discussion. Well, or when we have to do out-of-line expenditures, they participate because you're getting all that money. But they also have the updates.
They also, yeah.
That they pay for. So the PSAP and dispatch can combine, and make a problem.
Different discussion for another day.
Thank you.
Any other questions on bills?
I have mine answered.
Okay. I have mine answered.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the table. Everyone understands the motion? Any further questions or discussion, reference to the motion? Hearing seen none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Bills will be paid. Personnel. We've got quite a few here. I've kind of separated the new hires versus step raises, but...
Chairman, I do have a correction on one of the step raises. If they choose to do the step raises all in one motion, Marina Cleveland, hers should be a deputy to grade two at a base pay of twenty-seven ninety-nine. Marina Cleveland. Yep. So I did need to update that. So step, deputy to grade two, twenty-seven ninety-nine.
That's a step raise.
That's a step raise.
Well, I don't seem to have that one. But I will move to approve the step raises for Marina Cleveland with corrections. Rihanna Roman, Laura Frye, oh, there it is, and Reagan Mattson. Those are all step raises.
Second. A motion second on the table for step raises. Go ahead, Mr. Speaker.
I want to have a ten-foot water system.
There's still steps, but you had an example. The bar is Marina Cleveland. Cleveland has been four months, fourteen days since she last saw her step raise. If you can, words are succinctly, her earning curve is exceptional. The application of that curve on everyday performance is probably second to that. Other people, some wait a little longer, not too many ago, earlier, I try to apply a foreign language to the fair, yet at the same time, words, most people are exceptional. And I will be special. I'm serving this.
Any further questions?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. We have new hires.
We didn't go down that way.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't. I was just waiting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side.
Mr. Chairman, on the new hire, emergency hires, three of them are from East Plaza, Angel Gonzalez, Jeff Carlson. I approve those three. You hire, emergency hires.
Second. Any further questions or discussion, reference to the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. More new hires.
Ian. Ian Bupner and Leonardo Cardi...
One's correction and one's deficit.
Also, there's Grant Larson, too.
That one got pulled.
Grant Larson got pulled. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah.
Leonardo and...
Yes. Do you want me to read what they are?
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
I'd say we're not a good supplier.
No.
Move to approve it.
Both as presented.
Second. A motion to second on the table. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. How many defers are you short at this point, Brian?
We have one void, one still uninterfered, and that's two. And we are still short. Mr. Chairman, I should have noted, too, that I think Amber Plans had given you an update on the timber subdivision as well.
I just think you noted that effect, but I forgot to add that.
She sent an email.
Yeah. We made her out of it. Thank you, though. Travel requests.
I have two, Chairman. I have a travel request. This is from Equalization's office. For Mike Mehan, he needed to go to the annual social school, which has already come and gone. It was September eighteen through the twenty-third in June.
Travel training agreement.
Yeah, go ahead.
These are required.
Yes.
They didn't come to request it prior to the...
I think they found out late that he needed this requirement, and so...
Well, both of these are the same trip.
No.
The other ones for Sheriff. The other ones for Sheriff.
Motion to approve. Second. A motion to second, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Thank you. Hope you learn well. We expect a little bit of a report.
Four-H.
We expect a report, not a demonstration.
Mr. Chairman, one other item of Personnel I alluded to earlier at the beginning of the meeting is the four-H Coordinator Evaluation. In the past, I think Richard's handled that. I don't know if that's the board's inclination or if he's willing to do that again.
Are you willing to do it?
I will. Yes.
Yep. Gun raffle.
Mr. Chairman, you have in your packet a request from the junior class at Lee Didwood High School to host a gun raffle. It's for their prom and post-prom activities next spring. The details are listed there. They're going to sell a gun.
So you can tell if top school high school buys a pistol or... Motion not to object to?
Second. A motion to second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Thank you. Hope you learn well. We expect a little bit of a report.
Four-H.
We expect a report, not a demonstration.
Mr. Chairman, one other item of Personnel I alluded to earlier at the beginning of the meeting is the four-H Coordinator Evaluation. In the past, I think Richard's handled that. I don't know if that's the board's inclination or if he's willing to do that again.
Are you willing to do it?
I will. Yes.
Yep. Gun raffle.
Mr. Chairman, you have in your packet a request from the junior class at Lee Didwood High School to host a gun raffle. It's for their prom and post-prom activities next spring. The details are listed there. They're going to sell a gun.
So you can tell if top school high school buys a pistol or...
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Thank you. Hope you learn well. We expect a little bit of a report.
Four-H.
We expect a report, not a demonstration.
Mr. Chairman, one other item of Personnel I alluded to earlier at the beginning of the meeting is the four-H Coordinator Evaluation. In the past, I think Richard's handled that. I don't know if that's the board's inclination or if he's willing to do that again.
Are you willing to do it?
I will. Yes.
Yep. Gun raffle.
Mr. Chairman, you have in your packet a request from the junior class at Lee Didwood High School to host a gun raffle. It's for their prom and post-prom activities next spring. The details are listed there. They're going to sell a gun.
So you can tell if top school high school buys a pistol or...
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Thank you. United States Forest Service and County MOU.
So, Mr. Chairman, I presented to you is a draft copy of that cooperating agency agreement. Historically, you already have a cooperating agency agreement in place that is not limited in terms of scope or geography, but nonetheless, I think apparently the Forest Service, because no other agencies or governmental units have cooperating agency agreements for the Forest Plan Amendment, have submitted this to all the local, I think governmental entities to sign. The one that you have, we've already gone back to the Forest Service. We had a meeting last week with a group of folks, and Mitch Iverson from your Natural Resources Committee had found some language that he liked, that everybody seemed to like, from an agreement that was, that came from Nevada, I believe. And so that's been submitted to the Forest Service for their sort of consideration and ratification. The bottom line here is, well, and then the Natural Resources Committee is going to meet next Wednesday at three o'clock to discuss that as well. So I would ask or request that this get postponed until your meeting in October on the eleventh.
Sure. Randy?
Yeah, it might even be later, but can you save it on the agenda?
Yep.
I don't think we're getting ready till the last week of October. We've got a schedule for the four states, so...
Yep. And Custer. Yep. So that is, that already has been changed, so there's just no action today.
Everybody is aware of it. Everybody's got it in their bag. They're going to look at it. The Wasp Road District election in the street.
Last Friday was a big election.
Big election.
Big road district.
All right. Last Friday, as we said, we held an election with the Wasp Road District. We had fourteen total votes, fourteen voting yes and zero voting no. I just made a motion to canvass those votes and then declare it.
Everybody signs.
A motion to the second. Further questions or discussion?
So there, I'm sorry.
Hearing none? There's three, right?
How we do that?
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Bills? Anyone have questions on bills? Go ahead, Randy.
Under E nine one one.
Page nine.
Page nine. Motorola Solutions, two hundred and thirty-two thousand and nine seven twenty. That's the new radio system.
It's a full sale, I have three, uh, all of our systems. That represents sixteen percent of the process. It's fully upgraded. We've already paid ninety-six thousand.
I need one.
Forty dollars and fifty cents earlier this year, so the payment was decided to save me a fifty-dollar. My question is, you paid the City of Spearfish by eleven thousand dollars a month for services associated with this department. And we're paying for all the upgrades without their participation in the upgrades.
Well, actually, Commissioner, they just prior to our initiation of our process, which actually starts a couple of weeks ago, we're doing all the groundwork now, Spearfish has just completed the exact same process, so they, the City of Spearfish has been... I don't know exactly what the City of Spearfish would have been, but it would have been.
Do you understand my point? You give all that money to them, and they have interdepartmental improvements that they don't participate in payment. Seems a little one-sided. I know that it's dedicated for a certain use.
Right. I can explain that to you, but I don't know that necessarily that's how it lays out.
Yeah, that's that tax we collect. Get that back on the search.
They get paid for their area they cover. Does that make sense?
I think your concern is, it'd be nice if you still put Spearfish's PSAP, and that's the discussion. Well, or when we have to do out-of-line expenditures with... They participate because you're getting all that money. But they also have the updates.
They also, yeah.
That they pay for. So the PSAP and dispatch can combine, and make a problem.
Different discussion for another day.
Thank you.
Any other questions on bills?
I have mine answered.
Okay. I have mine answered.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the table. Anyone understand the motion? Hearing seen none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Bills will be paid. Okay. Does that make sense?
I think your concern is, it'd be nice if you still put Spearfish's PSAP, and that's the discussion. Well, or when we have to do out-of-line expenditures with... They participate because you're getting all that money. But they also have the updates.
They also, yeah.
That they pay for. So the PSAP and dispatch can combine, and make a problem.
Different discussion for another day.
Thank you.
Any other questions on bills?
I have mine answered.
Okay. I have mine answered.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion on the table for step raises. Go ahead, Mr. Speaker.
I want to buy in on ten steps.
I want to have a ten-foot water system.
There's still steps, but you had an example. The bar is Marina Cleveland. Cleveland has been four months, fourteen days since she last saw her step raise. If you can, words are succinctly, her earning curve is exceptional. The application of that curve on everyday performance is probably second to that. Other people, some wait a little longer, not too many ago, earlier, I try to apply a foreign language to the fair, yet at the same time, words, most people are exceptional. And I will be special. I'm serving this.
Any further questions?
Yes.
Okay. We have new hires.
We didn't go down that way.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't. I was just waiting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side.
Mr. Chairman, on the new hire, emergency hires, three of them are from East Plaza, Angel Gonzalez, Jeff Carlson. I approve those three. You hire, emergency hires.
Second. Any further questions or discussion, reference to the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Okay. More new hires.
Ian. Ian Bupner and Leonardo Cardi...
One's correction and one's deficit.
There also, there's Grant Larson, too.
That one got pulled.
Grant Larson got pulled. Yeah. Sorry.
Leonardo and...
Yes. Do you want me to read what they are?
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
I'd say we're not a good supplier.
No.
Move to approve it.
Both as presented.
Second. A motion to second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. How many defers are you short at this point, Brian?
We have one void, one still uninterfered, and that's two. And we are still short. We have six.
Mr. Chairman, I should have noted, too, that I think Amber Plans had given you an update on the timber subdivision as well. I just think you noted that effect, but I forgot to add that.
She sent an email.
Yeah. We made her out of it. Thank you, though. Travel requests.
I have two, Chairman. I have a travel request. This is from Equalization's office. For Mike Mehan, he needed to go to the annual social school, which has already come and gone. It was September eighteen through the twenty-third in June. Travel training agreement.
Yeah, go ahead.
These are required.
Yes.
They didn't come to request it prior to the...
I think they found out late that he needed this requirement, and so...
Well, both of these are the same trip.
No.
The other one's for Sheriff. The other one's for Sheriff.
Motion to approve. Second. A motion to second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Thank you. Hope you learn well. We expect a little bit of a report.
Four-H.
We expect a report, not a demonstration.
Mr. Chairman, one other item of Personnel I alluded to earlier at the beginning of the meeting is the four-H Coordinator Evaluation. In the past, I think Richard's handled that. I don't know if that's the board's inclination or if he's willing to do that again.
Are you willing to do it?
I will. Yes.
Yep. Gun raffle.
Mr. Chairman, you have in your packet a request from the junior class at Lee Didwood High School to host a gun raffle. It's for their prom and post-prom activities next spring. The details are listed there. They're going to sell a gun.
So you can tell if top school high school buys a pistol or...
Motion not to object to? Second. A motion to second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Thank you.
I remember guys bringing it. In the class, they'd shop to redo the stocks on their...
Right.
And every other picked up out in the park.
And just again.
Right.
So that now we're after class.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. County Employee Health Care Schedule for October twenty-first.
I don't know if Barb planned on commenting that, but she's getting that organized. It is as advertised, the typical thing down in the E O C from seven to nine. If anybody's interested, there are forms in the copy room. I can get them for you that you have to fill out. Have to have a copy of the front and the backside of your insurance card if you're going to use that, and so I can get you those forms. Anything else, Barb? Otherwise, it's pretty standard, right?
Pretty standard. I know that there is going to be an act like that downstairs as well.
Yep.
Okay.
So that includes, no, that includes the flu shot, and you can have your blood work done, that kind of stuff, if you're interested.
Okay. And then you do this automatic supplement?
Yes. And we received some hail damage on three sheriff's vehicles, and it's to transfer this, or automatic supplement this money into the sheriff's travel budget for the repairs.
Okay. A motion to second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side. Okay. United States Forest Service and County M O U.
So, Mr. Chairman, I presented to you is a draft copy of that cooperating agency agreement. Historically, you already have a cooperating agency agreement in place that is not limited in terms of scope or geography, but nonetheless, I think apparently the Forest Service, because no other agencies or governmental units have cooperating agency agreements for the Forest Plan Amendment, have submitted this to all the local, I think governmental entities to sign. The one that you have, we've already gone back to the Forest Service. We had a meeting last week with a group of folks, and Mitch Iverson from your Natural Resources Committee had found some language that he liked, that everybody seemed to like, from an agreement that was, that came from Nevada, I believe. And so that's been submitted to the Forest Service for their sort of consideration and ratification. The bottom line here is, well, and then the Natural Resources Committee is going to meet next Wednesday at three o'clock to discuss that as well. So I would ask or request that this get postponed until your meeting in October on the eleventh.
Sure. Randy?
Yeah, it might even be later, but can you save it on the agenda?
Yep.
I don't think we're getting ready till the last week of October. We've got a schedule for the four states, so...
Yep. And Custer. Yep. So that is, that already has been changed, so there's just no action today.
Everybody is aware of it. Everybody's got it in their bag. They're going to look at it. The Wasp Road District election in the street.
Last Friday was a big election.
Big election.
Big road district.
All right. Last Friday, as we said, we held an election with the Wasp Road District. We had fourteen total votes, fourteen voting yes and zero voting no. I just made a motion to canvass those votes and then declared it.
Anything else Barb, otherwise it's pre-standard, right?
Pre-standard, I know that there is going to be an act like representative downstairs as well.
Yeah. So that includes, no, that includes the flu shot and you can have your blood work done, that kind of stuff if you're interested.
Okay. And then you do this automatic supplement?
Yes. We received some hail damage on three sheriff's vehicles and it's need to transfer this or automatic supplement this money into the sheriff's travel budget for the repairs.
A motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Okay, United States Forest Service and County M O U.
So Mr. Chairman, presented to you is a draft copy of that cooperating agency agreement. Historically, you already have a cooperating agency agreement in place that is not limited in terms of scope or geography. But nonetheless, I think apparently the Forest Service, because no other agencies or governmental units have cooperating agency agreements for the Forest Plan Amendment, have submitted this to all the local, I think governmental entities to sign. The one that you have, we've already gone back to the Forest Service. We had a meeting last week with a group of folks. And Mitch Iverson from your Natural Resources Committee had found some language that he liked, that everybody seemed to like from an agreement that was, that came from Nevada, I believe. And so that's been submitted to the Forest Service for their sort of consideration and ratification. The bottom line here is, well, and then the Natural Resources Committee is going to meet next Wednesday at three o'clock to discuss that as well. So I would ask or request that this get postponed until your meeting in October on the 11th.
Sure.
Randy? Yeah, it might even be later, but save it on the agenda. I don't think we're getting ready till the last week, October.
Yep, and Custer, yep.
Sure.
So that is, that already has been changed, so there's just no action today.
Everybody is aware of it, everybody's got it in the back, ready to look at it. The Wasp Road District election in this week.
Last Friday was a big election.
Big election.
Big road district.
All right, last Friday, as we said, we held an election with the Wasp Road District. We had fourteen total votes, fourteen voting yes and zero voting no. I just made a motion to canvas those votes and then declare it.
Everybody signs.
I have motion in the second, further questions or discussion?
So there, sorry.
There any none? There's three, right? What?
How we do that?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same side.
There are two canvases to sign and three orders of incorporation to sign.
Goodness.
Please, and thank you.
Keep signing.
I'm done.
I am passing, I'll finish it. Yep, everybody's gonna sign, I just sign, and I'll finish up when we're done.
Actually, there's two.
Right.
There's two.
No, there's one.
There's one.
Okay, Pat, Shelley, if you'll join us, please.
Five, she interests me. Five copies.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just did the first one, sent it on, so I'll finish up.
I think the last three are just re-end all of the canvases you guys.
Mr. Chairman, this is the time and place set for the bid opening for four patrol vehicles. One bid has been received in a timely fashion. We can redo today at eight fifteen.
So change bid, so forty-seven five per vehicle. For the four, for the four, and each trade-in, ten thousand, which would be hundred sixty thousand.
Three trade-ins. Four now.
Forty-seven thousand five hundred and ten thousand four six one hundred sixty.
Pat and Shelley, do you want to go and look at the specifications and come back and report later on in the meeting?
Thank you.
With the chairman's permission?
Most certainly.
Probably wait and declare those to be surplus until they come back, if we can do what I suppose to do.
They make the motion.
Keep going. Well, you're fast, I hope. Thank you.
Are you sure it's everything below? No bid bond?
Just on the stamp.
Let me see, it's six. That there's a check? Well, it's a ten percent bid bond, oh, okay, all right, good.
That's what?
Ten percent bid bond.
If you have it?
Uh huh.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Are we on surplus three?
We'll wait and do that, Mr. Chairman, when you accept the bids, if you do.
Morning.
Morning.
And we've spoken about this, I think, now two, two meetings ago. Just to give you an update on what some of our costs are running at, and our jail board of prisoners was sixty-six percent of the year. Behind this, we're at seventy-two percent of spending. That's the same cost that affects us all in our personal life or affecting us as a county in terms of meeting the inmates. Now, whether that's important, I still think we're fairly solid. It's a little concerning moving forward at this point. Over the weekend, by way of example, we were running at a hundred sixteen percent of the cost. Also predicted, but it's still a little shocking to the staff when we are running at fifty-seven inmates. That's, those are numbers that are very difficult to manage.
Did we have a special event?
Nope. It's just, what we're seeing, you would understand this in a, in a, in a, with all that happened here with COVID. The after-bid is not really hitting us in terms of, in such cases, our numbers are very fine.
People are trying to finish up their time before the end of the year.
Yep. At any rate, travel is at sixty-one percent. It's been insured with sixty-six percent of the year going through, so we know that we're fine. But there's going to be some red, red numbers in the individual line items, I think our bottom ones that we're working to manage. But that I'd like to defer to Dr. Alka, in charge to kick off the update on building project.
Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, is a proposed professional services agreement from F M G, F M G Engineering, and it relates to construction material testing and observation in support of the project. They originally did some work, start the project off. And, and so we've been involved with, we had Steve Williams involved, Elavadas was involved. And, and I think Commissioner Diver also participated as well. And the recommendation from the group is, is that we engage F M G Engineering to do those services. You can see there's a stated amount, approximately, it was a sixty-six thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars, I guess. And, and so that's the rate we're looking at. They're going to go out and test soils and I think even wells and things related to the construction of the building, right? Fairly, fairly broad and necessary, and necessary. And, and so you can see the, the scope of their services here, I've kind of minimized it. But we would be looking for a motion to authorize the chairman to sign.
Questions from anyone?
I see that they took, I knew some of the assumptions, but they're more specific on the trips with the original.
Yep, we went back and forth, we had a meeting and asked them to clarify certain things. And, and I think everyone is satisfied that they had added the clarifications that we were looking for. So it wasn't quite as open-ended.
Well, and, and it's usually a good idea to be the same consultant that did the soil analysis. I think it's in line.
Got motion in the second, further questions or discussion from anyone? Seen none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, both same side.
I should add, Mr. Chairman, that I, probably that the sheriff and or I are authorized to sign these kinds of agreements that come up in the interim between meetings. But because we got this sort of at the end of last week and we anticipated this meeting coming up, we're doing our best to try to present these to you for your consideration, right? To the extent that we can, might not always be the case, but it was, we were able to do it here.
I have just a little question on the project. I've been going up there periodically and they started doing all the land and everything. Now I see the whole thing has shifted to the south. They cut a whole bunch of trees down, I'm wondering what's, what, why, what was the purpose of that? Those trees, to me, was a really good buffer to have up there. Now we got this big open hole up there, it looks like the project has moved right up to the edge.
That was actually specifically by, can't, any of those in response to our commissioners during the planning process. We wanted to ensure that we capture all of the available space and to leave as much room as we can for future growth with the county. So what was displayed is exactly what we have as a master.
Maximizing the site for other uses in the future? So that was tucked back in the corner.
We're required to add more trees on both sides of that as well.
I just wish, but yeah, this board was apprised of some of those decisions prior to it being done. Even though the committee is acting on behalf, I, I guess I'd like to know some of the particulars.
Just for clarification, we did discuss it. We asked them to bring it over, because there was about twenty to fifty pieces of space that was already lost on that site. And so we asked them to talk to them, and that's why it got moved over.
Yeah, the county meeting, we discussed it here.
I think there was so much other discussion, but we didn't discuss it here, it's out of our request.
All right, the last two weeks. Question I have.
I guess we didn't weigh it out.
Right, we didn't talk about the trees, we just talked about.
Yeah, we knew it was going to move.
So we're saying presently, we continue to have meetings quite regularly. There's a number of issues that we continue to work through to try to resolve. We had a meeting last week that updated the construction schedule that you had asked for Commissioner Diver. Hopefully that was clear satisfaction. Additionally, the actual property area where the building is to be built is now at green. There's more work to be done, they had to bring back a piece of equipment they call their hammer so that they can dig out the foundation. Been up there with the last forty-eight hours, know how hard that, that was proving to be. But anticipated, there's a lot of rock up there, which they're going to have. So that's what I've done, I actually understand that Mr. Diaz is going to answer some questions in the portion of security grant. So those are the first of those questions.
Like, you know, the reason, the reason the schedule is important is because they have a big data payments to, that it's going to have some idea when our big payments are coming up. But if I may, Brian, I would go into the discussion on cybersecurity, so I can set it up, Greg can respond. The, there's grant available under the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act for cybersecurity. And the money is slated to go to the county, to this state, and the state will distribute the business grants to the counties. And the state is hesitating to do that right now, we're asking why. And so I talked to Mr. Diaz about getting some specifics together for us. And I used the scenario with the governor's staff. I said, if we give it, could get a hundred thousand dollars, that's almost what we can add in our budget each year with our three percent tax rate. And other counties don't have any money. And then the tax fees they can't pass is cybersecurity. And we had, we noticed that we had a, a, a virus in the pipeline, and it's sent out to everybody as an example. And why the governor's office was hesitant to facilitate the grants was beyond us. So we're working at the association of counties and the municipal league to say, hey, we want you to take this money. The concerns the governor's advice had was the match funds and managing budget. And Dakota State was into this type of, it was offered to manage it. So I was hoping that Greg would put together a proposal so we could get it to them as an example of needs that you have as a county. So we can promote the state taking the money and re-issuing it to, so it's all the municipalities, that's the term for everybody. Counties, cities, townships, that's a generic term. Get that money to people who need it. So Greg, did I say that out proper?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And I, and I would add that, I guess, this grant, when it's all said and done, eighty percent of the funds goes to the local credit. Only twenty percent goes to the state. And five percent of that twenty goes to the administration of the program, which in this case, like the state steps up to the plate to help administer the most funds that are turned over to the county as a fee. But, you know, all the funds have to funnel through the governor's office first, but then, you know, the real beneficiaries are, are the local credit. And there is, I've been working on a statewide coalition, Greg will see that the, the regional director for the cybersecurity and infrastructure security agency, who is the, the federal agency that this money is coming from. They're, they're working on developing a plan, how those funds will be distributed throughout a four-year period, for your grant program. And an initial focus on trying to assist some of those smaller entities that have virtually nothing. And, you know, we're all in this together, and they like, like, when you point out the fight, but, you know, we're, we're all working together at the local level. And, and the more secure, those smaller entities are, they benefit every month. So that's, that's the whole, with this program, there's a lot, a lot of good things that can be done with it, but we are relying on the governor's office to step to that.
So a follow-up, what I'd like to see, Greg, if we, if we could put together a program that would work for us as a sample or a pilot. We're already doing it, so we can take now time over here. And the decision has to be made by the governor's office by November fifteenth, so if that sample will give us some backup, position, take the money.
No action at this time?
No, I just wanted to know that I asked him to do that. Didn't want to step on those.
That was chairman, that's all I have, unless there's more questions for me, I would ask that I could come back and address the bid after we chat up.
We'll, we'll look at it when you come back in. Any questions for the sheriff before he departs? Okay, none, we'll go on to Deb Tridle.
Get it.
Chase the fly? I didn't see the fly, I saw swat.
Swat.
Thought I got the home of the trailer.
We had the auction last Friday, and it went very well. Well, we got eleven thousand for the property in Deadwood and fifty-five hundred for the property in St. Arch. We had four, four bidders and with three bid on one in Deadwood, you know, starting out with three on one and saying, oh. Yeah, 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 we did, yeah, same. So I think in the future, maybe that's the way you go.
Good, we cleared up some things on there.
Yes.
This surplus product.
Yes. So, we can, yeah, we'll, we'll need a motion to kind of be, accept the bid and sign the deed. The one from Deadwood was sold to Joseph and Julie. Oldham? Oldham, yep, and then the one from St. Arch, St. Arch Village Highway was sold, sold to Gold Farm and Ranch Incorporated.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
So move, second, I have a motion in the second, any further questions or discussion from the board? Okay, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same side. Thank you. I have some other discussion.
Yes, on that third property we have over at St. Arch. The three appraisers went back out and discussed it, they feel that that property is less than the five hundred dollars. So you guys need to set up, price to put your brain, I did get ahold of Mr. Olson, he's willing to pay with everything you guys suggest. He'll be here as soon as you guys set the bids.
Mr. Flynn?
I would recommend it be what's not paid tax.
There was some taxes on, it hasn't been on the taxes.
All right, what would be if?
Definitely, he's going to call you, he'll allow that. I just had a message from her. But I gotta, I gotta, I sent her a, so phone number four, but she says you don't have it.
I thought at one point can the other person make that?
On the piece that, that wasn't sold, that would be the piece that we would propose that you would sell to the Olsons after revised appraisal, appraised at less than five hundred dollars, four hundred ninety-nine?
That's right on the corner of the earth.
Right, I think so. So, so yes, that was the one that was sold to the county back in the thirties. And then the same person that sold it to us also sold it to somebody else in the fifties. And since then, it had been conveyed two other times, raising questions about the, the title. In each instance, in those other three sales, I think they were sold by warranty deed, so it should have been picked up, but it was indexed separately, and it wasn't. And, and so I'm, I'm coming in a bit late. So there were the two parcels that were sold on Friday, and I think you signed a quick claim deeds, and then we're circling back to the, the earlier piece that was pulled. And again, the appraisers reappraised at less than five hundred dollars, which I think by statute allows it to be sold directly to the Olsons. And so I think we would recommend that the sale would be four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and.
Mr. Duncan?
I, I would just comment, it's appropriate to be at that, he had a warranty deed, so that's all it reflects.
Got a motion in the second on the table, everyone understand that motion? Any further questions or discussion? Seen none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side.
And we just happen to have a deed for Mr. Olson for the chairman to sign. And we also have certificates of value that will need to be finalized and presented and submitted along with the deeds to the, to the.
And we should probably thank him for blowing that.
Yes. We're just good.
And then I have a couple other properties that I want to, there's that twelve inches over in Spearfish. There's that something I should look into and see.
And then we'll, we'll feedback.
We've had that for years, I think it's a piece of property when they platted it all out, and see, in town of Spearfish. And see if it's closest to maybe one of the neighbors or something.
Between two odds.
Yeah, that's just it, just the inch, six inches.
Maybe what we could do is vacate and go out about it, convert to the two odds, you know, like an hour.
I, I will hold that information that I have and get with you and we'll decide what to do with that.
I mean, it's just sensible.
I think that one should get cleared up, there's a couple of ones I'll research out, but, but that's, that's one that I, we've had ever, and I'm pretty sure some of these one of the ones.
I'm unclear about how that ever got created, if there's a plat or what there is. Yeah, I've never, I don't think I've ever seen the documents we've ever evaluated, if it was a mistake in surveying or, or what, but theoretically it has to be platted. And to what end, I don't know.
It could be a rem.
Yeah.
I think it was a remnant possibly, but I was just trying to go through, clean up some of all these other little nice spots.
We could be the design divided.
Thank you for your effort.
So, yeah, there might not anything, be anything to vacate, it might just.
Twelve inches, twelve inches wide and I.
Hundred or hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah.
Challenging setbacks.
Challenging.
That's my next project to try to get cleaned up, to get it on our books. There's a couple other ones that, but I'll go.
As I said before, thank you for your efforts to clean this up.
Yeah.
We are one of the counties that are just about, that's what it's.
Yeah.
Unless you guys have anything else, I'm not ready to sign.
Um.
Thank you.
We've got to sign them.
We could take a five-minute break. Alan's out there, I saw him.
To have the, the, their science, right?
Well, if they want to, and I think we have to sell them, we can sign, or we can sign them too, but then there's the part where owners are occupied, but they have to consider.
Just move.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Got to move.
Come in.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll call Mr. Olson, please, and have they have to check.
If, if they want to, I put on this is not currently owner occupied, but then they have to, they, if they want to, they have to, it's not going to be owner occupied because of their law, right? So I don't think they're even eligible, but they have to sign those if they want it to be.
So they don't need to sign that again?
Um, well, I don't think they, I don't think that they have to.
Because I can surely go and call and meet both of them.
I, I think we probably should, so that if they want to, that, you know, in case they got something in mind, and then, um, I can sign. I can sign, I can sign, I can sign that. I'll sign those.
You'll decide how much. And I don't have a problem doing it, it gets easier out there, you can just sit there, keep going until the bid hits. And then that, I mean, it's, it's a little field. You do know how easy it is. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. You did, but for county action. Yeah. Half, two minutes and see why it didn't get filed. Yeah, you must like. Yeah, can you go through the minutes, can you tell why? Yeah. Because I don't think it's on my notes. Yeah, we'll turn it over to you guys. Are you getting? Is that already getting taxed?
Hello? And it's stolen tracks. Yeah, I was never planning to make forty, the, 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 it's easy.
Plus, there's different branch or branch needs.
I know I gave her, yeah, isn't it though? It's for old people. I know I gave her your cell phone, because I called you up to make sure it was okay, that I gave her your phone number. And, and it's, yeah, and then she said, I never got, well, yeah, anyway, I'm not going to argue with her, right? So. Well, I kind, I, I kind of did, and then I just gave up. Mm-hmm.
That's the first thing in the last. Walk in the archway and says it, it depends.
Right, right? That's about right.
Is that in reference to billing?
Anywhere. No, it depends on seven minute bill.
It's actually, there's a, there's a name for that.
Is there really?
Oh, oh, yeah, there's law firms that specialize in kind of like, basically screwing the clients. Yeah.
My, my, surprise.
Yeah, it's called like the value, I think it's called value billing.
Value bill. So they have one of those chest timers?
I don't know if it'd be dangerous for you. I don't know.
Yeah.
All right, we are back. Alan, are you ready for us? Morning. First thing we have is bid opening. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good to me. We'll share. So apparently I got this through.
All right, we'll do, we'll open these bids for the gravel freshener first. We have two bidders. The first bidder is R C I, brushing and excavation, drive juice, otherwise known as drive juice construction. Their bid reads, uh, and they have required bid bond. Required. Their bid reads a total bid of one hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred dollars. One hundred and ninety, five hundred dollars. Their unit prices, and I didn't have unit prices on the tab without, that comes to four dollars and fifty cents a ton. Then we had some quality testing, and there are six tests. And those are five hundred apiece, so that's three thousand and six, and a total of one hundred and ninety dollars. Alan on the test and degradation. And our second bidder is Timberline Services Incorporated, and they are from Sundance. Their bid reads, the total bid is two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Is there a bid bond?
Yes, there is a bid bond.
Thank you.
Their unit price came to thirteen dollars and sixty cents a ton. Their testing, quality testing, was one thousand dollars a test for six thousand. Bringing their total bid up to two hundred and ten thousand dollars. I think we have representative company today, I want to say, they're, they're new to, they haven't did any of our work in the past, but, uh... They do have a quarry down there at the Four Corners. Quarry you see there. So they're away in the Allo Camp. Yes, Mr. Flannigan.
Alan, did you have a idea of what the per time cost would be? Engineers estimate or your estimate?
Well, right now, our, what we're buying gravel from the quarry over here at Centin, it's ten dollars and fifty cents a ton. Then we have the hauler. I recommendation we should order to the little bidder, RCI. So, second. Go ahead, motion in the second, everyone understand the motion? Any questions or discussion? Seen none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Both same side. We will award. Thank you for bidding. Okay, we have a lot of other this last year. Let's go back to, uh, at our last meeting. Yeah, driveway applications. For the, uh... Peaceful Times Development Office, you know.
I resubmitted those. I don't think I resubmitted those to you, I think. You're not gonna have them. I, I can pull them up from before.
Quick question. Did we continue this till we had the meeting with the city of Spearfish? Now the motion?
Yeah, to continue, it's to continue until the next meeting, which was the twenty-seventh. To allow discussion with the city of Spearfish about expanding Colorado Boulevard border study to include this area.
Stephen, I have, uh...
I, I had a discussion with the city. We had a, that with the last, about this recorder study. Like that they're in, they're in the process of starting this thing. As far as us, uh, being able to, they did not want to add us on to the, we can go out and hire HBR ourselves. With the same parameters, setup, that they had goal, that will given by the city of Colorado. So that's, that's what I found out from the city last week. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I've been going back and forth with, uh, the new city administrator, Steve McFarland, as well on the issue. And we haven't been able to, to get together and talk, but that was my understanding is that, so the Colorado Boulevard study, uh, that you recently approved, you know, that was one thing. And then we're talking about this road study, which is a separate matter. And as Alan said, it sounds like they have selected their contractor and the scope of it. And so I, I think at this point they didn't want to expand that on their own, is that a fair summary? That's my brief understanding, it would be consistent with what Alan said.
Was that the, I was not at the meeting, so, was that the holdup for the whole approach?
Well, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
My concern was, uh, traffic study said it didn't need to be a turning lane. Was one of the things concerning, and the other side of the road is, is annexed. And we should align these approaches, and those are under, both, both those areas within the city limits. And, uh, the applicant was willing to take, to remove the Boulevard materials so you can see better, but these are going to be elderly people, people with high-speed traffic, who know where to have a deceleration, unacceleration. So, uh, to me, I can't, can't support any of this until the city, the county sit down and work out the long-term details for that piece of road to the culvert, the bridge. I, I just can't support this. And that's no reflection on the, the developer or the applicant. It's more of a long, what are we gonna do out there? They're hoping to put it in that study, so did know if you're done.
Yeah. Because that's all going to be Boulevard too, part of the, right?
Yeah, well, it's that interchange where it comes in at that skew. Where, uh, Acorn Ridge Road hits St. Andre. That does not mean kind of, oh, if that's you, you look over your shoulder and you see that traffic, you know, why not talk about it? Now we're gonna have a lot of traffic, more traffic. I, I'm just real concerned about.
Sure.
That's just my position.
Anyone else? Alan? Well, I, I think at our last meeting, we kind of, sort of just worldly here that. We were gonna bring this up at, at this meeting. No formal discussion has been in place with commission and the city council other than what Bruce has visited with Steve, I have visited with the engineering department. And that's basically, you know, uh, the state DOT does not have an issue with that, in this, these approaches.
Accepting what Commissioner Dybert said as being factually correct and reasonable, um, I have to throw out there an option, uh, just as an option, uh, to treat the road similarly to what you've done on Christianson Drive and other related issues. And say that you think that, you know, uh, that it should be a city road, you don't know if you have jurisdiction over it, so to the extent that you do have, you're approving it like that. I don't know if that helps or not, uh, to move it along, perhaps not.
Going the other way where it's been accepted we have jurisdiction, we're saying no.
That's right. Understood.
Well, if we do have jurisdiction, that's where I would be. But I had a question for the applicant.
Uh, when did you want to do this? You want us to, uh, grading, we're buying this Friday, sending grading points. For approval?
Yes.
When do you anticipate that? So if we were able to respond to this on the eleventh of October? Well, I, I guess we have brought up that you wanted to wait until this DRTs align them.
No, 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 I wanted to talk about cooperative effort between the city and the county. At your interclear, you're wanting to approach, especially all the, I've called the South Side Cross. We haven't got any information from the city on what they're, what they're gonna allow having over there. And then I, I also wanted to talk about the turning lane policy. So we don't do the turning lane now, the county also paid for it. So we have developers on both sides paid for it, and it makes it safe, in my opinion. Another traffic study that's imperative. I, I don't feel very disoriented currently, but it's a long term with the other side, well, that was the time. But I'm just one commission. I'm not a, I'm not a traffic engineer, but we did have some traffic engineer to do the study. And that was a request that the county made, but we do that. And it's like, we did it, and now you don't like what we have to say. So it's like, understand. What I would suggest is that we move with you and one of the commissioners and the mayor. And see if we can get some traction on this.
I just go.
Understood. Yeah, my position was we have one time to get it right, if something gets killed out there, there's no reason, we had that same situation on Mayland where a kid got killed because it wasn't proper lighting. Trailer park went in, one light, way too much to rest. But we are putting, you got the problem, I'm just talking about the turning lane.
Yeah?
That's just me, guys.
Fine.
Or other commissioners.
No action at this time, any questions from anyone?
What's your recommendation?
Well, we, we asked them to do a traffic study, to get that. We don't necessarily agree with the traffic, I think a turning lane. I think a turning lane for the future would be smart on our part. Knowing what's coming up in the future. But whether we can hold up, I mean, hold up this process by requiring, asking them to put in a turning lane as far as stipulation and training was, these, these driveways. I don't know if that's culture or...
I'll go ahead and make a motion, the language that you suggested, like we did on Christians. If you can give me the correct verbiage.
I can kind of synopsize it, we'll, we'll pull it exactly, but basically that, uh, to the extent the county has jurisdiction to issue the permit, if any, the county authorizes, authorizes the permit. I think it's kinda how it's been.
Just the gentleman's got a little past me, you know, so.
Does it make sense to everybody? It's kinda like a quick claim deed of approach permits.
The city, for your, just, the city doesn't have any issues with us renting these where they're currently, they, they looked at it, they reviewed it, they don't have a problem. No. And, but when Monument comes. I don't know when that's going to be, and I haven't seen any layout from Monument. The city does have some, from Monument, I guess. But it will be imperative that their, their driveways, and that they're, would match these two existing directions. Right, straight across from the building.
Mr. Flannigan. Have it off on an alternative motion. I'd like to do that. A motion that we use the same language, but in the motion, it will also state that no more approaches would be permitted on this stretch of road until the, uh, is transferred to the city of Spearfish.
I'm looking at amendment, is there a second?
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get a, a second on my motion, so mine died.
We're going to go back to the second, so we'll go back to.
This is a brand new one.
The new motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, everyone understand that motion and the terminology?
Wow, yeah, it's gonna take us a while to find it. I think I, I think I summarized it though, uh, that's how you've done it in the past.
So we do the same thing, only no more approaches would be permitted by the county on this, on this area of Acorn Ridge Road. On Acorn Ridge, it's, it's St. Andre.
Until what?
Until the city takes the jurisdiction. I don't understand that. Okay? Motion, any further question, discussion in reference to the motion?
So that allows him to get one of the charges?
Yeah, yeah. Everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion, Jerry.
There's this one.
Oh, I don't know.
And that one.
Well, it's totally insane what it's supposed to be.
I can data. Thank you.
Okay, another. All right. We have a book submitted by Larry Jeeves, this is off City Road. Site distance is good, both corrections will require, hold it, eighteen-inch. Second. Any further question, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Both same side.
Just that one.
Another driveway permits submitted by Larry Jeeves, this is off Nemo Road. Down there by the crowd. This gentleman, he currently has a driveway, but it's right over the crest of the hill. What do you propose to not doing, and then safer, you can move. Current driveway, under the crest of the hill, east side.
Right out here.
Right across from that existing. Then the old one, once he gets to the existing driveway, hopefully we move upon it. He actually has to build a little, uh, extra driveway on his own property. So, building. It actually will make it a lot, I said that looks a lot, but it looks, it makes it a lot safer for the, the recommendations by the patient. Most all recommendations.
Second.
A motion in two seconds. Everyone understand the motion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Next driveway, this is off of, uh, Highway fourteen, Smith and John. Right across from the, uh, driveway from the, uh, Altive, like, for stadium. And I did double-check this mention on our DIS, it seems like baker's, this is poker, bought the property and it hasn't, doesn't show up on our DIS site. Currently, the baker's accessed the property from their property to the east, thus the east, entrance Albert Highway, West Highway fourteen, onto this property. Site distance is good, it will require. I would recommend. So, all right. A motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion, Jerry. Yeah, we get you the utility, it's, uh, utility permits submitted by Moncannon Tools Utilities, running the gas line. Central gas line.
Go ahead. I, I'd like to see what the cost is for this right away, I've been purchasing. Get some of those funds to offset installation of the gas line at the, uh, safety center. Way outside the original proposal.
Yes.
So I'd like to continue this, approach the next, next, I'm changing my motion, second.
Motion in the second, everyone understand that motion?
I don't know, I don't know what I do. Do I, do I? Do I, do I matter?
I want to have a discussion with them about purchasing this driveway and the cost.
And Alan understands what the task is?
He doesn't have a task.
But, and I don't, and he doesn't understand. His radar's going up, he's not computing. So, anyway. I, I don't know, I understand it's going to be continued, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do.
So we will cover that. Doing a lot here.
Won't cover that afterwards. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. We'll get you up.
Okay.
Uh, that brings us back to the, uh, this was the, suspended last time too, Deer Mountain San Fernando. District for the. Water main along the Brownsville Eaglewood.
Where we have this one.
Deer Mountain. This is the last meeting about. And in, and in all honesty and all fairness, I never get meet with anybody out there. To show, have them show me their exact route. So that's our meeting. If you're still wanting that done, I will make sure I get that done. I ba, I put it in a pile and then basically forgot all about it.
Go ahead, Mr. Dub.
I'd, I'd like to continue this to our next meeting. I want to continue to our next meeting. We have that visit, I'm worried about the circuits and road. And also, I would suggest that you share the M D U permit with them since it's in the same area, same area. Have them coordinate that look there.
Right, motion in second, everyone understand that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. Motion, Jerry.
I also have in the certification form. Certifying your acceptance of five year plan. This is. At our last meeting about the five year plan. What's the deadline for? It's fifteen. So we have one more meeting between now and the deadline. But if you're willing to accept five year plan, this is perfect. That's perfect for. See no reason why. That would give me more time to get it all prepped. That could be for itself, so we give you the deadline. Mr. Dub.
Well, sir.
About two, three, and four, dates too.
I don't have my plan either.
It's installed, it's asphalt pavement, Maitland Road. Point two miles south of Christianson Drive, Forest Park Lane, which is ten point five miles. Asphalt Mall, on the mineral place. Half mile. And asphalt mill on every day, Winterville Drive, one, two, five miles. Those the last two are. Certain about the city to. Close to the city limits there. In the city, and coordination. Or you shouldn't do it then. Kind of mixed up. I, I think those.
Commissioner Dub.
Well, on the mineral place, that's county on both sides.
Yeah.
It's that north south of Eastwood Falls. As you come across the curve. West of the song, that goes north, so that's county side, but it's left. Whatever they work in the subject. Right next to Gollers Field, there, yeah, and so that's solely in county. And the piece on. Winterville is the primary entrance into Mountain Plains, which is the county. So those two. And Winterville on the south side is still in county, too. So the only part of the city is on the north side where the well is, and the park is, and the game fish, so. The piece from Winterville into our plant. It's a different story, but this is just that piece, the curves there is. So I understand why those are on here. But I support removal of the first one. Move to that effect, but the other two are solely county.
I'm assuming you'd have to make a motion to remove that one. Vote on that, and then we could approve if it follows.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Now, your motion is?
I'll make a motion to remove the Oliver Street.
The Oliver or? Basically, well, that'll.
Second, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Now. All pages. I don't think.
To install asphalt pavement on Maitland Road from, from point two. Zero mile south of Christianson Drive to Forest Park Lane, one point five miles.
You understand?
Yeah.
That's part of your second. Everyone else understand that motion? Okay, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice first, and if I can't understand, we'll go back and roll call, but. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side.
The other two are the. They mentioned already, the already asphalt.
Yeah.
It's just long term. Scratch number two entirely. The twenty twenty four motion for the five year plan has amended.
Second. The motion. Everyone understand the motion? Further questions, yes?
Um, I was just wondering if you wanted to keep the wording that you had last year. With the added proviso and understanding that the schedule is subject to change and is further subject to funding availability as you had asked.
Yes, yes.
That was important.
That's what I seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. Thank you, motion, Jerry. Five year plan has been adopted.
Dr. McGurk has a question, Sharon?
Yes.
Can I speak with Alan?
Sure.
Alan, there was the, the. A comment for that that was continued to this meeting, are you going to be ready?
No, he, uh. He dropped it.
Did you pull both of them?
Well, he's still working on the one where he's like. When I told him that he was going to be required, but he don't have. Rolled up the status like he's.
We just put it. So both of those have been pulled, then?
Right, they're neither one, neither one. The one might be.
The one on Kirk City Road.
The Kirk City Road is, no, we've done money.
He's still working.
The only one he's still working on.
Somebody's listening online to the Lawrence County Commission meeting, can you please mute your microphone? We're listening to you, thank you.
All right, anything else, Alan, project updates?
Little update. You've seen all of the white little flags and all of the. The signing project. Got started here a couple of weeks ago. Actually started, this is the signing project by one time. Supposed to have been originally scheduled to be done.
Their process is relatively bizarre to me. The contractor goes and marks the location. And then another crew comes and drives stub in the ground. The square post that anchors the sign. Then the next crew comes along and puts in the new signpost with a new sign on it. Cuts the existing or removes the existing sign that's on the existing post, but leaves the post. And then the post, their crew will come along later when they're all, they pull all of the old posts. So it is really a strange, in my opinion, but.
Part of it is now eight one one locates requirement the flag at first. That's why they're flagging. I want you to flag every dollar position right and then just go out and mark your people.
I understand.
That's the first part of it.
The way that they're doing it is just mind boggling.
Do they have any fire suppression when they cut things?
I have no idea. They use a good excuse.
They use a saw saw though, so they're not making too much.
So that's an update on. We've had a lot of. Where all the white flags are. That's, that's what it is.
They just won't mark those things up over the place.
Anything for, anybody have anything else for Alan? If not, thank you, Alan.
Yes, the striping project, normally we have our roads striped by before the rally. Well, this year, we're still waiting for the striping to be done. And there's a possibility, I guess, even though they told me they would be starting later, we haven't seen them yet. So I don't know whether we're gonna get new stripes on our, on our left off road yet or not. Chip sealing project is done, that's completed. Didn't get moved. Contract has been revealed yet more. Another projects we got going on. Oh, we got about two thirty one road, favorite road down in south. We started prepping that for regraveling next fall or next summer. But there's a lot of ditching work and cullards that need to be installed. Plus a lot of trees that need to be removed. We're down there doing that work now. I guess yesterday was the first day that we had a full walk with the landlord, but one, just one so far. We sent out notices to every landlord up and down the road. What we were gonna be doing, why, all the work that we needed to do. We do have an advocate down there with, I guess, a couple of people that are.
What was the nature of the disagreement?
This gentleman claimed that we need, we cut trees and dropped them on the span. We're taking all the trees out of the right of way. He, he claims that we dropped a tree across the fence. We hadn't even gotten to this property yet. So, but it was resolved and everybody was happy. He wanted some of the firewood. We've been given all of the wood from lab over to set one. I wanna say thanks to Alan. I had a thing on Friday, I was driving around and I saw, I saw a bunch of asphalt machine or something sitting in the road on a narrow place there. Whole train of them and I was, I came back out and all of a sudden, there's one piece of equipment sitting in the one lane of the road. A bunch of cones around it. I thought, well, let's try to hear someone get more. So I went a couple subdivisions. Couldn't find them and then I went, did a bunch more running around and came back out and then sure enough, they were in that double D drive. Doing chip seal. And they had all kinds of flag stuff on the county road and they had their equipment sitting on another county road block in the lane. And I drove up and I said, get permission. They said, is that your equipment? And I go, this is yours. Get permission from the county to put that there? Yes. I said, well, I'll call Alan to make sure. And so he went out and checked it. Of course I didn't, but, uh, but he went out, he's all come out there and see what's going on and they weren't there much longer.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they couldn't find a place to put their only equipment inside the subdivision. The works that just left it parked in a lane of county road.
In the middle of the place.
Not the middle, in the one lane, one lane. But thank you for going out and checking.
Richard.
Uh, it was two thirty one going on town.
Yep. To holes came and that's our obligation to take care of the holes. So it's gonna make a big difference.
So one, couple of four. They're, they go north there at that intersection.
Got you. One seventeen.
On the power line, at the power line, I think where that's at. I think that's the one they're, uh.
The one they're developing now is north of two two.
Yeah, it's just north of, along the power line. The property sold to the south, the property sold to the south. One of them sold into pieces because it was big. And then the other one sold as, as what it was in the past.
This is the one that Denny McKay and John Frederickson have been here discussing.
That's the one on the north side, it's along the power line.
Anything else for Alan?
I have nothing else.
I apologize to anyone that's here for the nine o'clock public hearing, but we're gonna take a three minute break. We'll come back to your public hearing at nine o'clock. I, I'm sorry, we went long.
You know. You can wait. No worries. Go Brian.
Sorry, Brian.
No worries.
I gotta get everybody back on track. What time is it? I don't even know. Yeah, we're a little behind. This is the, this one's an easy one. I, I know.
There you are.
I'm here.
I was gonna find you and then I distracted and something.
I ran over, I had a free coffee across the way.
I got my, I got my beverage selection down there.
So I was like, do I have time to go grab my, I had my coffee card was full. A free coffee. Well, so I was like, oh, I think I do, but. Is it? Okay. Fun, fun.
I kid.
What is this there? Sharing this tab? Oh, yeah, I have to, do I have, it's shared?
Yes.
Okay. But I don't have to do anything. It's, it's online shared?
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as I know.
So I don't need to do anything to like share screen or?
No. I'm sharing.
Okay.
It's a different deal now.
Well, it looks different than what.
For whatever reason, your meeting's in there too, in my, in my, in my.
Yep, because I have you as a co-host.
Oh, is that, okay.
Just in case, like if, you know, cause usually your computer sits here.
And, and so, no, it's, it's as far as I know, it's, it's shared, but the whole thing is different now. It changed a couple of weeks ago and then it's just like, it's even more different now.
Cause when I got in to set up the next county or planning and zoning hearing, I was like, this looks different.
It wouldn't even give me like a dial up number for that phone, so we're just using my computer audio. But it, it seems, we talked to Jackie and it seems to be okay.
Okay.
So, um, so we're not even using the phone audio.
Okay. Which is okay, yeah.
We're putting the recordings online.
Yeah. This, this first one won't take very long.
Haven't we already had the public hearing on the job floor?
No. Commissioner, you did it planning and zoning.
Bruce.
Bruce isn't here, but it's Amber.
Hi Amber, it's Jackie.
Hi Jackie.
Hi, I am just wondering, could you tell Bruce that it, it does get difficult to hear the further away we are from Bruce? So like Brian is difficult to hear, Alan's difficult to hear. Ever sitting in that seat is hard to hear.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll let him know.
Okay, bye.
This, like last night, I don't have a clock.
I know, we're gonna go to the public hearing that we missed at nine o'clock first. Should I advise the sheriff? I'm just gonna have to wait.
All right. I'm putting on those tables turn.
Usually it's me that has to wait, so hey.
All right, we're back in the room, we'll go back into business. We have a public hearing. If you want to make a comment in reference to the public hearing stand, give us your name and address. You'd be allowed to make a statement. Go ahead.
Okay, so this is a public hearing for, um, Dave and Patricia Johnson. And they are asking for, sorry, I gotta get to my sheet. They are asking for a temporary second residence. This one's a little bit different, um, they do meet the acreage permits, they have over two hundred acres. To have the temporary second residence for a ranch hand, like we've seen in the past, is it's easiest to put their well and septic and everything right? Where they already have all the power in the well and everything for their existing home. Um, they would, they are asking for something different than what we've kind of done. So the condition, um, that talks about, I think it's condition number two. They are not certain yet which grandson will be living in the house because they have multiple. And so they are requesting, they have all the names in there, but they wanted to be able to let me know once the kids figured out which one was gonna be living on site to help them. So we have Jeremiah, Warren, Tyrell, or Nolan maybe living in the house, but they just wanted a little bit of time. Because, you know, by the time they get the house out there, it'll be a little while yet. Um, and they, they wanted to know if they could just let me know at a later date. And I, I don't have any issue with it, but that was something they requested. Um, other than that, they meet the over hundred and sixty acres for a temporary second residence because they have over two hundred. They know that they can only have one additional residence. Um, annual review will be done every year. We do ask for proof of the hired hand, but in this case, it's both, it's, it's a family member as well. Um, and then we've always asked that whoever is specifically listed is who will be living. So that's why they asked for a little bit of leeway on which grandson will be taking over. So that's kind of all I have. Um, Nick, when Nick Broyles was still the City of Spearfish Planning Director, um, he had no comment on it. I did ask him to comment and he had no comment. So that's all I have. Um, they've given us all of their paperwork and their proof of mailings.
This is a public hearing, so anyone present in the audience would like to speak for or against C and P four seventy nine? Just go ahead and stand, give us your opinion. State your name and address before you give us a comment. Would anyone like to make a comment for or against? Anyone? Seen no one on close to public hearing portion, you can come back to county commissioners. Okay, motion. I'm sorry, cut you off. Second? Okay. A motion second to accept the C and P under the conditions that are listed. Further questions or discussion? Mr. Flagler?
Um, to approve.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Mr. Driver?
The, uh, motion by the planning and zoning was to change the item six.
Um, I think I changed it.
Oh, so it's changed right here.
Yeah, I wonder if we took care of that, if we took care of that.
Um, and it should be Adam two. It was the occupant of the second residence is not the listed family member because we don't really know who it's gonna be. Yes, sorry. Yep.
Any other questions? Seen none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? It is carried. Thank you, sorry for the delay. Now, if we may, Amber, before we go on to this next item, we can do the bid for chess vehicle.
Good morning again. We have had opportunity to review the bid. That is, uh, in total is for a hundred and sixty thousand. But I'm trying to subtract the, uh, the trade in price. Pursuant the conversations that we had last January, we did, uh, made specific comparisons with state bid. We would argue that there would be some savings if we went with the state bid. But you could also argue that we might owe this money. It really comes down to what the auction price is for the vehicle. On one hand, with the local bid, we've got a known figure. The, uh, price saved, what I would estimate at about nineteen hundred dollars. We go in the state bid, but we just easily lose that amount, right? So we might recommend, recommendation that we accept the bid. It is within our budget to amount. And, uh, we've had a good partnership with that local company for quite some years. And the motion follow recommendation, get surplus of three vehicles, end numbers, uh, to show up on our agenda.
Second? The motion is second, everyone understand that motion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same side.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, Amber, second reading nine fifteen. Yes, we will be, we will be out. Change of zoning, three fifty three.
All right, so this one, um. I gotta, we're gonna, I have an old piece of paper here, so I gotta look and see. Okay, so change of zoning three fifty three, second reading today, so you guys already got all the information at the last meeting. Um, this is on the forty acre parcel. If you'd like to go from A one to A two, it is in a similar area that we've been seeing this occur. Um, west is Spearfish. Here is kind of the current zoning map, so you can see where all the A two zone property is right now. It's the forty right next to it. Um, I guess nothing out of the ordinary here that I, for what we've been seeing in that growth area outside of Spearfish there. So I don't know if you have any questions, um, he's here if you have any questions as well.
When I see the C and P, you do it, it talks about the right of way itself.
Yeah. No, um, so that was the exact same comment they've given the last three A two change of zonings that has occurred out here. And the commission has opted to not. That, the plating has to go through Spearfish, so if they want it, they can put it on a plat sort of a deal is kind of, I, I think is what has been your guys' review in the past.
And the other, other part of that, the access end does not come through. Comes from the west enough that the east is direct, so it doesn't come from the service road and through those other subdivisions. It comes from the.
Cabal.
Comes from the west side.
Yeah, Cabio, is that who said Cabio?
Cabio.
Drive, I think is the road, right? Cabio Drive, so, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any further questions or discussion?
Recommendation from planning and zoning.
Go ahead. Recommendations.
Oh, recommendation from planning and zoning was to approve it and there was no proponents or opponents at our P and C meeting, so.
Mr. Slick.
I guess I'm always against that invasion of A two, but I, the culture is just avoiding, avoiding gobbling up, uh, what I have to develop.
Okay, so another, anyone else? Is there a motion?
Motion to follow recommendation for change zoning number.
Three fifty three.
Second? Vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, so I'll get this sent to the paper today. It'll be published on Saturday. You have twenty days of a wait period because it's a change of zoning. Okay? Yep, thank you, you can bring the sign back whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Randy is back with us. We need to recess as county commissioners convene as board of adjustments. So I would entertain a motion to do so.
Sure.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? Okay, go ahead. Amber, this is a public hearing also, so if you would like to speak for or against this, please stand, state your name and address, give us your opinion and we'll move on from there.
Okay, this is a variance request for Adam and Jennifer Masters on track three A of the summer place tracks, which is, um, you can kind of see the general location here. It's kind of off of Rochford Road area. Um, they're requesting a ten foot variance to the twenty five foot front setback for the new barn and residence. We've been working with this property for a year and a half, probably. Um, they did build a barn, I'm gonna go to the, kind of the drawing here. They did build a barn, which is over here. Um, and then we had them do a detailed flood study in order to determine where it was because of where the map shows versus, um, where the actual is. So they went through the detailed flood study process. The structures are actually out of here, but we had them still do the floodplain development permit to show kind of location and everything like we normally do. So this was the first structure done. This is the second structure, one is a barn, one is a barn house. Um, so that's this one here. And because of this, I felt that it met the requirements of asking for a variance because I don't really want them to scoot it back to get into that area. It's kind of a, you can see where the water has, the high mark has been. Um, so they're trying to make it a little closer up this way than coming back. Um, and just the general size of the, of the area and location that fit best there. Um, there's already well, the driveway approaches are in there. Um, and then you can go here, I've listed your considerations in the staff report, so if you need any help with those. Um, so in this scenario, I actually recommended approval, which doesn't happen very often for the variance, but due to the floodplain and the other things, um, it really is the best location for it. Um, there's also a power line on this one, if I remember right, that made it where it was kind of difficult to, to be in there. So that's all I have. Um, planning and zoning did end up recommending approval of it. And it was a one, two, three, it looks like four to one, Shank voted against it, which is pretty consistent. He usually does with the variances.
Okay, this is a public hearing, if anyone here would like to speak for or against us, please stand, state your name and address, please, give us your opinion. Anyone like to speak for or against? No one? I will bring it, close the public hearing, bring it back to county commissioners. County commissioners, questions, discussion, motions?
I had a question, why didn't they change the name of the house to get the thing? I worked, my house was that way and did another segment for another structure that needed to be adjusted in size because they had a lot of drop off bucks. I don't know why you couldn't do thirty five by seven, forty by whatever, it's not bad. I have kind of difficulty figuring out by forty by sixty is the optimal size and the only place I could do it.
Nope.
Anybody have an answer?
You wanna? This, this is Adam, by the way.
Jennifer Masters wants you to go there for six five roach group. Uh, it is a horse barn, um, and it's kind of an interesting pre造型. Kind of mock and a specific dimensions. The, you know, horse period is on the bottom, that's, it's a culmog and a sharp line. So it's got a horse.
I'll go back to the other one.
Size of the structure.
Cause I haven't turned.
Thank you. Yeah, that's your question. Mr. Driver?
It appears to me that we could move it to east and south, most of the gravel road. And be closer to meeting the setback. Followed up, that fifty point fifty five contour. Right, just like more of the base, kind of where that, where the red dot is.
Well, if I slide it back, you guys will have to be sitting back and like, oh, a little more. See the gravel? Move the sixty right to where the gravel is, where it's handling sixty, right over where the gravel is, to the southeast. It would then, you know, fit the setback and still be above that contour and fifty dimensions. So it's sliding scale is about sixty feet. East and ten feet to the south. But when, when, when you need a variance. Concourse represent, it's a completely deal. I'm not, I'm just clear on, yeah, I get to get my stretch on this one. Basically slide it, the whole building, what it gets to the right and then down as much. So it's gonna be here and be down, right here. Square. That'll be right, just out of the way. And too close to the power.
The power line runs through there. You can see the power line right here? So. That red line? And that's what the power company is saying, he's too close if he slides it that way.
So Lonnie with Black Hills Electric, uh, gave me a bid on Baron, the power line's like a thousand dollars. So I have to be.
And it's hard to see it on this map, but it's right here.
I apologize, it's being drawn, so.
Yeah.
That's the problem. That's, that's.
Anyone else? Questions, discussion, or motions?
It requires a super majority, so I think four out of five.
Yep.
Hearing.
Yeah. But I'm sure you got four.
Sorry, God.
The motion is second, everyone understand the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
I'm gonna have to guess as well, I guess I don't see a march.
Okay. I do need a super majority.
You need to build on that box.
We need four out of five, but this time it is nine to pass.
I don't know materials with power line deal.
Yeah, that's, I see is part of the problem. Okay, that's been decided. Didn't have a super majority, but needed four out of five, but this time it just got back.
So, I don't think he's gonna be able to meet the setback with the power line, from what I, cause I, I did it to see, he can't move it down. He might be able to move it over a little bit, I don't know. So if he comes back with a different front setback.
I guess that's my, I don't see that, just because there's a specific plate for design of house you want. If it does fit on the lot, we have, we don't. I don't know, I don't know an easy way to word that. And I, and I know what he's trying to do, I really get it, but I don't see the hardship just because that's what you want. I think, I think it's opportunity development, no problem. Just maybe a little different style of what, what you purpose. And that's why I don't see the hardship. Maybe that people, it's like, well, yeah, you just change your garage shape to this. You know, that's, that's what I see there, I just, I, I understand, but I, I don't see that that's a hardship.
My only comment would be if we had a two scale drawing, we could make better decisions.
Good.
I don't know if I could have, I, I set up the corners and I pictured where that, uh, basically a line over the corners. I know.
Okay. You get with Amber?
Well, except for I don't know what to tell you, so.
Tell me the book.
Basically what I'm hearing is they're not gonna approve a variance, so you can change the layout of the building to make it meet setbacks, which is means probably going smaller, is kind of what I'm hearing.
So they had a hidden to prove it, and so if you wanna come back in, we have to start all over again.
Yeah.
Okay, we need to reconvene as.
Well, three of us approved it and it hit us, so.
We had to have.
I know, I understand, I'm just saying, I don't. I, this is second hearing, I've sat through it and listened to the explanations and I understand what he was explaining because my son went through the same thing on some of these pre-designed stalls and things and to make it fit, I can understand what he's.
I understand what he was explaining because my son went through the same thing on some of these pre-designed stalls and things and to make it fit, I can understand what he's doing. And I didn't see a real hardship on our behalf to approve it, so that's just.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not saying this is a good idea, but if the gentleman has further information that he could present that might answer some of the questions, it might be an idea that the person that made the motion the second to withdraw their motion to, to disallow it, and, and then if that went past, then it could be continued to another meeting and further information could be brought there. Motion was to approve.
Yeah.
That's right, right, that's right. But that motion could be, could be withdrawn as well.
Could be withdrawn and let him look at it and bring it forward the next meeting.
Public hearing would obviously be closed.
So for the board.
Well, I wanna, I wanna be fair to this gentleman, so I would formally withdraw my motion so that we can allow him to bring further.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
No, at this point, it's the motion in the second. If we remove that, then there was no action taken at this time, and we can move it on till the.
Eleven.
Eleven.
You need a formal motion to.
Continue.
To continue it to the next meeting for further, uh, information, dimensions to.
Probably makes sense.
So we basically zeroed out what happened today other than the public hearing.
Yep. There won't be a public hearing in the next, go ahead.
My comment would be to have a more detailed drawing showing specific dimensions. So we can make a final decision.
Okay.
I have to understand on that, if I can see now, we've already continued.
We've already continued.
Be on the 11th.
We will be back on the 11th. It will not be a public hearing, but we'll be back on the 11th. Okay? Now we need to make the motions.
I made, I made the motion.
Please be clear.
To continue.
Okay.
And I agree that's on the side.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part. So we have a motion in the second to continue this till the 11th of October. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same side.
We better kill it. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is Auditor McGruder satisfied with all that? Did you track that? I'm not an expert parliamentarian like, like the auditor is, but I think that is an appropriate procedure for like our, our rules of order.
Now we need to move back to his county commissioners.
Move to adjourn as board of adjustment reconvene as county commissioners.
Have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same side. We're back to county commissioners.
Can I take just a second? Adam, I will, I have an idea of what we can do, but obviously I have to keep going with this meeting, so if you want to hang out for a little bit, I can talk with you, or if you want to come back, um, or we can talk tomorrow, whatever works for you. Okay.
Clear as mud. Better credit for apple spray.
All right, so at the last, yep, at the last meeting, um, I think you guys continued, right? You continued this to this meeting, and you asked me to look at a couple different things, and honestly, I just, I had to go back and find them, so, um, the one other question that ran, I think it was Randy, I think, wasn't it?
No.
I think it was. Asked about was, have we approved, uh, plans for this portion of Alstom? Yes, we did. I have here K L J did own, and you guys approved all of this stuff. Plus you approved the, or you accepted the D A and R letter for the. Yes, for the extension of it. You can see that they're working on that now, the building's gone up and stuff. So yes, we got that, and yes, you approved the preliminary plat already. But the final that you're gonna see October 11th, which is what this bond is for, is for lots, I think it's only one through seven, because they have to finish the road. But you had kind of a, there was this road question here, and it's because this is the extension that you just didn't see on the final. I think that answered your questions. So I looked at those, and those are all there, so with that, I have no issue with you approve. What they're trying to do is be able to move forward on the buildout and get the final plat approved, which you, you did approve the other stuff.
Well, the way they're dedicating and they're showing on the plat, they were stopping that road.
Yeah.
That's our surety, that they'll continue that easement, so it makes it important. On the plat, they didn't submit it, they just stopped it there.
Right, but the bonding, the bond is including the, they're just doing that portion of the plat, but the bond will include it.
Include the other parts of the road.
That's how I understand it, yeah.
So we have the bond.
And some of the road is already done, too.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Turn around, just.
Well.
The word is the bond normally look down, covers the rest of this chump. And the 11th of the night. They're not having, they're not putting yet some of the criteria for a trial, so. As long as we have some surety that they're gonna approve a piece of the road, and the bond should be that surety, probably. Otherwise, it doesn't meet our criteria. You know, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but you allow it in, I'm sorry, but you've allowed it in every subdivision to let them plat portions of roads. So I guess I don't know. Today, yeah, today you're just doing the bond for, so they can complete the road. To accept the bond, yep, and then you would sign it.
Yep, we have a motion in the second to accept the bond. Everyone understand?
And we allow the chairman to sign and to approve the motion.
Um, I'm a. Yeah, we don't usually have a signature on those.
We don't worry about.
Everybody has the format in my past, I'm not.
Everyone understand the motion?
Unless you want, you want them to do that, right?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same side.
So then the, the memorandum of agreement is the second part.
Everyone understand the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those same side.
So I just.
Thanks, Amber, for going back.
Yep. I see a signature on that one. Um, and then we had an update, um, I think Bruce let you know that there was an update on the timbers. I also forwarded you Kurt's email over the weekend. He just asked if there was any way that you guys are at the point yet that you would be comfortable with us issuing, he has two foundation-only permits that you allowed me to issue, but we weren't allowing him to go forward, um, based on the email that he sent you.
Where is it? In Europe? Are you bumping on shoot permits instead?
I, I am. I think you have landowners out there that disagree with my review of it, but I, I mean, there's water there, the pump, I mean, he did the, everything's running. It's not fully completed, and that's what Kurt says in here, but he feels as if it is, I mean, it looks like it's running and it's going to those houses.
Go ahead, Ms. Amber.
Well, if we were to lift the permit process, we could say no occupancy permits would be issued.
That's fine if you want to. Yeah, that, I think that was their bigger concern is winter-wise.
So what do you need a motion to add?
Just a motion to allow building permits to be issued, but no occupancy permits. Okay.
Give me a second.
What, what is the capacity of the?
Thirty-three gallons a minute.
Thirty-three gallons a minute.
And there's still a bit of supplement water, they're hauling water back and forth.
Yep. They have, and right now this well is actually providing water to all the houses. It's, it's operational. It's just they were waiting on, um, the tank part. They're, they're in the middle of constructing the tank. I don't know what they're doing anymore. They were hauling water.
Yeah, they were.
Yep.
Still are.
He, he just says in here that they are currently supplying the Timbers Residence with the permanent water supply through the system. They're waiting on delivery of two pressure tanks. And he was hoping to have them done by today.
The pressure tanks aren't there, maybe they can't reach a couple of miles.
Yeah. And he said, yeah, and basically it says, once those pressure tanks are in, they will be installed to, I mean, everything will go to the houses.
So our concern is not that the owner, the.
What was your motion?
Yeah, my motion was to allow building permits issued without occupancy to the homes that water energized to.
Okay.
Everybody understand? You were the second, Mr. Flannigan? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same side.
We got a plat, I think. So, um, Bruce, I don't know if you knew this, rim rock was pulled late last night. I got a, um, email or a text from John Frederickson. They were not able to, the, the engineer shot in some stuff late Friday afternoon, so they weren't, he, they didn't feel comfortable with trying to get everything to you guys today for as-bills and whatnot. There is still an issue with, um, not really an issue, but they're, they've hit rock on one corner, and it's like less than 1% off, but they hit rock, so they're trying to figure out what to do. But they may ask you guys to let, I mean, it's a very minute amount on one corner coming off, so they're trying to figure out. So they just asked if you guys would please continue it to the October, the next one, October 11th? If you would just continue it to that. I think we need to, because I think they continued it last meeting.
Fair enough. Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those.
Okay, so the next one is, um, the class development, and at the last meeting, I believe you had, um, some people here from the H O A with a lot of questions and, you know, some concerns. Um, and they, with that clause, I believe, I don't know when they had the meeting, but sometime after that, they met. They have come to a new agreement. We did get a copy of that, and it was in your packet. And it was recorded, so it's a recorded agreement, not just a draft agreement. And then also, um, the as-bills were received and the letter regarding, um, fire plan completion. So we did get all of that stuff. I think the only thing I had down for notes from you was the, the update from the agreement, like whatever agreement was in place. And that, so we did get that. It was recorded, I believe, what, September 13th?
Mr. Flannigan, so the amendment to the preliminary plat was to change the aggressive, aggressive approach.
It's just to realign the road, I think is probably the best way to say. Is that correct? The engineers are here if you have questions.
So there was nothing else substance on the preliminary plat producing except.
No, just the geometry of the road.
And the as-bills.
And then the as-bills, which we did get those, and we got the, like I said, they did end up giving us the letter of completion for the fire plan.
So outstanding items would be, if they prove the preliminary plat, the outstanding for the final with the water, the road completion.
Um, yeah, but the road's done. They, they gave us as-bills already, so.
That big culvert got put in? So on the south, they're trying to.
It's the first phase, I would call it. The road is done.
So I would move to approve the amended preliminary plat.
Okay, any further question, discussion from the board? Any none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those?
Aye.
Motion okay.
Okay, and then you guys will see the, what, what, we got the first however many lots, final plat, but they've already sent us all the completion stuff. So that'll be on your October 11th agenda, just so you know. Okay. So you guys are good to go? Amended preliminary?
Are there any questions?
Oh. We'll ask.
More happy to answer questions back though.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the water. Are the wells drilled? There are no wells drilled, I mean, for the wells drilled tomorrow, approximately, a lot, a lot, 32 were planted on testing the well, so we can service six to eight homes in shared well. That concept in that first region. And, uh, everybody's asked, well, what are you gonna do about the water? Can I drill a hole? I don't really know. So that's where we're at. It's kind of that way with this whole project, I'm worried about the road agreement, well, I couldn't give them an answer, so I've got information back, so. I think there's two or three residents that might be for a black meter terms gas line, missed them a little bit. Daughter was at, they had a picnic, they read the road agreement, there was not one comment whatsoever about anything, there were no questions asked of us. We have people say thanks for being a good giver, and then at the same time regarding water, there was nothing said at that. I don't know if you guys realize, it's approximately 30% of the lots, it's, 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 oh, there hasn't been any, any reaction whatsoever, what they're gonna do with wells in those undeveloped lots. So the people that seem to be creating the most concern is directly into the person that's doing the most correctional thing that's needed. So I'm getting to a point where we've done everything we possibly could, even this Ebro sample 50. We got people saying, well, this is a stupid place, your engineers don't know what they're doing and needs to be moved up to the corner. Well, I spent $6,000 in two weeks of time to explore that possibility. When we find out that, we have to carry out 400 feet of a hill to construct water flow, and then on top of that, lose 20 feet of sight line distance from where we're going, it's usually happened. So we, we don't sit back and not listen to you, but we back it up with facts and information, and I hire engineers. Now, one person who brought a complaint about our division has one engineer comment whatsoever, yet I spend over six figures on engineer work on this thing. So, you know, and, and my daughter was at picnic, and she had a positive response to the comments, so I'm more than happy to answer your questions. The board themselves, we have a great relationship with, the one letter you received from the board member was board member, the board did not approve that letter. They have no awareness of that letter being written, and that board member resigned a couple days later. I have a great relationship with the board. I just wanted to know if you can have water for the final flat, flooding and the water to the residents. Yes, I know, but, but I've traveled here four times, and I hear so much from the other side and, uh, meeting the residents, so I just want to express to you guys that, as you hear from residents, this was my opportunity, hopefully to hear.
Chairman, I think I said that before. You know, so we're looking forward to your well permit and your well information, so we can make informed decisions.
But I, I want to clarify, though. They can have individual wells on these lots, you wouldn't have to approve them. Okay, so I guess.
I'm worried about getting water to the houses, because that's been our home the last several years.
Okay.
On some assurance that they're gonna have.
So I guess my question is, is I would not normally ask for well information with this final plat coming in because they don't need it.
Well, he offered, they were drilling, so. Yeah, I'll offer the information what we.
Okay. Well, I just need to know, so I.
Commissioner, please.
That you're wanting that.
Yeah, but I don't know, it's still basically. There's seats here, why, uh, hell, I know they're here, but, yeah. Just concerned about things, and we, we, we don't have a lot of information about this, but, uh, I don't know. I don't know. I know last time I was here in May, he spoke to board to address the, the concrete road. He said he was gonna come back that afternoon and, and ask some questions, he never showed up, and I was here. I've extended invitations for people to come up to our project, um, you know, with myself in town, so I could explain everything, but that's not my answer to you, so. I, I don't know what more to say.
It's not a county road, and as far as I understand, Ellen doesn't, won't look at it. He doesn't have any say in it, because the access points don't come off of a county road on this part.
Okay.
That comment was from like six months ago, and he has, it's fine now. That's old information.
Let's finish. Yeah, go ahead.
I think when we go to the final plat, we can have.
All right, we're gonna move on. Everybody understand where we're at? Okay. Michelle May here?
Michelle's here. She should wait. Put myself in the.
Welcome.
I will let you pass these around. Any extras, I'll go to view commission next week, so I'll take them back if there's some enough numbers.
Do you have anything in here for her, do you know? It's October, no, September.
Uh, thank you for your graciousness, but I did need to reschedule my project task lines at the state fair. Prior to that, I was in Bismarck's bedside for quite some time, so. So you'll see the August and September report here. Quite frankly, in a blink of time, we had county fair and state fair. Those are our two main things during those months. I understand we're still in September. So just yesterday, we picked up our character all-stars, but you'll see a lot of numbers there, so if we start with county fair, we had almost 1,750 entries altogether between you and Florence. That includes the. That includes the desperate increase here of animals, uh, which caused our fair board, who works very, very hard, to really kind of have to work to make sure the grounds of the fair ground had enough stalls for the animals. And they did a great job with that, but we continue to do a lot of improvements on those grounds. Ultra Garden will switch this year to accommodate for almost a triple increase in the last two years. So thank you again for your support with the County Fair in particular. Uh, State Fair, you can see some of those numbers there as well. We did have families build with livestock. Cindy Riley, who is the administrative assistant and her husband graciously brought the static entries to me this year. I met them there and my father passed the next day, so I was only at the state fair this year for three days. But overall, from what I've heard, things went very well for the families that attended with the awards. As I indicated, Character All-Stars, we got Kate Finney and Dago Roberto this year for our Character All-Stars specific to Spearfish. Yesterday, they met with 166 third graders and it went very, very well. So that's pretty exciting. Uh, we will continue forging forth with our extension work on teen mental health first aid. If you recall, we did that last year, uh, with over 300 teens trained and we're going to go ahead and start back at Spearfish this fall. We'll just kind of whip through a lot of that administrative, not to minimize the great, great work that Cindy does, but for brevity of time, we continue to be very busy in our office. She is now into our recognition event that's coming up in November. So that's the culmination of the year for our 4H years and our junior leaders help hand that. The back page, you will see some of our final numbers. Again, our 4H year is going to come to a close and start again October 1st. So my reporting is always due to the end of September and that was last Friday. So you'll see there are the numbers that have been indicated, some of the extension work that we do, both with you as well as Lawrence. Lawrence tends to hold some of those greater numbers right now for extension. And that's just to reflect that different places allow different people in for whatever reason. So Balfour, for example, uh, with mental health first aid, they've taken another venue and another avenue and I greatly respect that. But obviously, as you see there, Spearfish has, as well as Devlin High School, has let us in, for lack of a better word. I don't, I don't mean that disrespectfully, I debate that. That's, that's the reality that reflects some of those numbers there. So we're doing a good work. I appreciate your support. So we can continue with that good work. And honestly, I'm just trying to wrap my brain back into getting into the swing of a great new year. But I certainly welcome any questions, any concerns. And I do know I met with commissioners yesterday and so in terms of budget, they're finalizing that.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Well, I was fortunate enough to attend part of the county fair and I did a really good job of keeping some of the buildings very warm. Then went back in Romeville and thought it was there.
Wow, that.
Inside the building when he hit it, so it made it really cool.
Really?
There was no real supervision of that building.
Like with a hot week?
It's all car. We took care of it.
All of the things that happened that I don't know. Wow, yeah, it was a hot week. We've got some adjustments to make for specifically our board show. That's a tough one. It was 104 and it was a six and a half hour show.
A little more. Any further questions, comments from the show? Thank you. Thank you for all your work. There's a lot of you there.
It's never boring.
Always our guy, Mike, so I think that's a good place to let, so a lot of good trees there. Back and forth. I didn't say it was last year.
That's right. They're, they're making great improvements. Um, actually, the newspaper will be out there this afternoon. Are, are you a part of that? Did you get the invitation on that? So the newspaper's coming out because we have a huge iron gate that was put up over the entrance for you Lawrence County. Those were really nice, so. Again, we appreciate your support. No snakes this year at the companion animal, but we did have a bear in Oregon.
Lizard.
Yeah, snakes.
Okay, pitwana?
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Nice to see all of you.
Brenda? I want to read those into Resolution 22 dash 27.
You had the public hearing at the last meeting and that has been closed. So this is the time or place to approve Resolution 202227 for the 2023 budget.
Questions from the board?
Make the motion to approve Resolution 2022 dash 27.
Second. Discussion and questions. Mr. Sleep.
Well, going back from the, that's discussion, I had, I think, questions on its own itself. I suppose one of the major, major, you know, we have a lot of 10,000 cars. And it's all for. People that work their junk and they have to, I don't know. Now, the commission should see, uh, there's five thousand of that to those people that do it's responsible. If they aren't responsible, like, you know, the county needs to take care of it and put the money on their taxes. Uh, to have the rest of the tax payer.
Yes, go ahead.
I believe that discussion was to pay to have it cleaned up and then they would determine if we need to build it back. But we wanted to have some money in place for that reason, if we have to do it and then build it back for it.
It's working out.
And there was another discussion we had before about we had offered certain grants. We did, uh, on, that he's on particular property. Kind of leave around Valhalla or somewhere, you know, this, but we didn't, but the idea was have money in place that we can do it. Then we can decide if it's appropriate to build or appropriate to, I don't know, say waive or issue grants.
Mr. You.
And I could be wrong, but I was.
I, I do have heartburn with, uh, the taxpayers cleaning up somebody's property after they've made a mess, so. Uh, I totally agree with what Commissioner Sleep was saying. We've had these issues forever and some of these properties are difficult to get them to clean it up. But I certainly do not feel we should be paying for it.
I can agree with you, but to keep our ordinance in motion with our complaints, sometimes there's no choice.
We've had two instances, I think, where the county has purchased dumpsters and helped facilitate this and it, and it's worked out well. They, the owners have put in their sweat equity. I think in both cases, uh, well, in the, in the one case, the, the lady, uh, was, was behind on her property taxes. Her husband had died and, and was in kind of a challenging spot and it had the whole neighborhood kind of in an uproar. Kind of a similar situation. Another example too, there's a, a single lady, uh, husband had left and he, they, they were the primary collectors of things and they just didn't have the wherewithal to sort of sort this out on their own. So that's just a synopsis of how we've done in the past.
Maybe we can weight this to making an arrest, you pay for that, you pay for prosecution, you pay for the public, you pay for work. Understanding all that, and I mean, it's, of some comparison, if we're going to have the ordinance in place to clean this up when we're faced with that obligation, we have to have a way to do it, maybe we tend to, I understand what you're saying, though. Mr. President.
Well, we, we would have a couple of choices. If we didn't have it in the budget, then we'd have to do a supplementary, I'd invite you to want to help or assist and then recover. Or we could take it out of our contingency. So, um, you know, I, I saw increases in the budgets and other things and we have to double things, so. It's worked really well in the past, so I support bringing it in. If we don't use it again this year, then we're looking to move it or reduce it. We haven't used it in the past very effectively. I have another question.
Go ahead.
On the agenda, it says approve 2024 county budget.
A pro.
2023, just so we're very clear, this is the 2023.
Mine's correct. Uh, mine's, so mine's correct.
The motion is correct.
I did, I did catch it on one of, yeah.
Yeah, mine's correct, mine's correct.
Fifty, fifty.
Just that the motion was 23. Still have a motion? Any further questions or discussion? Any no one else? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
There's, this is a, three, triple tip, please. Thank you.
Just a name on the side.
All two. Three minute break.
I did see you the other day wave at me. When you dropped off your request and I was like, I was mic. So I did write the page after you went bye. Did you have that meeting yet? For that. Right.
Oh, yeah.
But I couldn't vote against the whole budget because of the populations I have, so. That's what I think. Yeah.
I understand what you're saying though.
You're standing out in the cornfield by yourself, Richard. Even though I agree with you on a lot of this, it's just, it's too bad that.
Too bad we have to go down this road.
Well, it's, it's like when I was on the state there and you get voted on the budget and then there's things in there that you just, oh, kill it.
Kills everything.
Unfortunately. Even though Richard's, now he's approving it with his signature. Well, it's hard to vote against, but it's all right.
Oh.
That's all right.
You do what you feel is right.
Absolutely.
We still like it. You gotta do what you feels right, right? That's right. Stand up.
And I voted against, um, last deal because I don't agree with those rates where they're, where they're coming out.
And then up there.
Did you vote against it or for it?
You, you voted for it.
Yeah, that's right. See, there I was, standing out there by myself.
In the cornfield. Right, we have a few minutes, everybody's back. Uh, any items from commissioners?
Uh, yes. Uh, I've been asked, the, uh, emergency management group that doesn't get any weight, is from the county, so to speak, was wondering, uh, I guess the county has decided to have a Christmas party rather than the $10 gift certificates.
This is for search and rescue.
Yeah, the search and rescue has requested that they'd like to do the $10 cards because, uh, they volunteer all of their work. They don't get paid, uh, rather than the party, correct, Brenda?
I think they were requesting to have a Christmas party and take it out of their budget.
Okay.
It's because back when we had, we gave everybody a gift card instead of, in lieu of it. Now that we went back to having a Christmas party, they're just requesting that make sure that you're okay with them. If they have their own Christmas party, that they can get out of the search and rescue budget. Paul said that the budget would be able to handle that, so they just want to make sure you're okay with that. How I am.
I would support that.
I would support that.
Do we need a formal?
Well, you just, so you know when you're going to approve the bill.
You got to draw it on that, Brenda?
I don't know. We have a county Christmas party, well, county works all the years. To some degree, I understand that, but on a degree, it's like.
I mean, they donate tons and tons of dollars to their virtual site, so I didn't have an issue with it.
I can hear a few things that came home. Um, we, we see two donations from search and rescue from our rescue efforts for a tragedy that's somewhere in North Jefferson. Little marathon so that the cash deposit is to Orange County for its back front. Our money has to be for the, but that never will happen. That's what that was, it's not.
And that money was supplemented back into their budget.
Let me move for that, ready?
I just want to see help money increasing to pay, pay for services. That's where I'm at, so I think that. I stand as supporting their, their ask, I, I don't think.
Any other items from commissioners?
I'm, I'm going to defer one to after the public.
Okay. Well, I hope you get 10 minutes.
I don't know where he's at. I've searched all the places.
I'm going to go ahead and, well, the public, then, items from the public, anyone here would like to make comment, Stan gives your name and address.
My name's Delane Carlet, 20234 Frontier Loop, Whitewood, South Dakota. The Coos Development, uh, when you guys do the final plat, um, I wish you would consider taking over Frontier Loop from Jackson up to the first entrance. Just, the only reason I'm bringing this up is a lot of my neighbors have been talking about it. The huge amount of traffic that will be on that road at that time. We're not asking you to take over the entire Frontier Loop, but consider the, from Jackson up to, it's, it's just over half a mile.
Jackson up to where?
The, well, where the first entrance to where the Coos Development would be, it's just over a half mile. It's a north-south stretch from, uh, Bay County.
Okay.
And then, um, all the neighbors who live around me said to say thank you for work that you're doing on Jackson, so. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who might address some subject, any subject, anyone?
Is there a delay? I have a thing.
Okay. Jim?
Yes?
We're ready for you.
Well, I guess we'll officially tell you, I'm done in a year.
Oh, come on. Couldn't we get you to stay another year?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
He just passed his test for five years, so his licensure goes for five years.
Yeah.
Again.
I think another year would fit well in your life.
Did he sign travel training? I mean, he's just got to pay it back.
It was free, it was free.
It's all free.
Thought of that.
Yeah, that part of it, so.
Officially, you get minutes notice at the end of the year.
Yeah. Who would you want to advertise?
What is, do you, have you done the letter?
No, I haven't done the official letter. I got to write that letter. Yep, yep. Okay, I'll write it.
Or you'll get fired.
Fire right now. Not really, just to try to get as far as I can to the end of the year. Because the state don't want you paying me until the next quarter necessarily.
Do you want me to tell you when your last day will be?
I guess you're going to tell me. There we go. We'll have Brenda tell me when the last day will be.
Standby. Try to study.
No, I know, when you start advertising, it's not going to hurt my feelings.
Slaves have to be, yeah, you can just quit.
December what?
December 17th, Saturday, it's been cut off of the pay period and will get paid in December, therefore you will not be paid until January.
There we go. Yeah, that's all, like, that's my last.
Well, he don't want to have any pay pass, what, June 30th?
Well, he doesn't want any pay pass. If he only wants to be paid in, in 20, December, otherwise then he's another one.
Because you won't get your cost of living increase until you have that year, so he just want to keep it clean.
No, no, that's good.
I would move to advertise for the position.
Okay.
Immediately, second. I will get that ready for you then.
Thank you. It's official now.
It's official.
All right, all those in favor of advertising, excuse my, but saying aye, aye, opposed?
And I can send that around. We have a newsletter through our association. I can send that out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll thank you for this grant. All right, gentlemen. Thank you.
Tim, Tim, did you want to talk about, um, hiring anybody in the interim period?
Oh, gee, yes, other meaningful. The advertisement for the appraiser, of course, was still on the county webpage. If you click on it, it just says error. But I've had about four people contact me now. They're local people. And I'm, I guess that's the main reason I was coming down today was to ask, is there a chance that we can hire one of these people to get them started before the end of the year?
To fill a position?
Yeah.
What position?
Well, I'll be gone anyhow. You're still going to need at least one more appraiser. And the other thing is, uh, well, that's what I was just doing down this morning in this meeting with our GIS expanding. Uh, this new software is truly phenomenal that they want to do, uh, because the other company that was handling our web presence is going, they're, they're going out of business, whatever. So this one will have a lot of information that people will really click on, really user friendly. They can get parcel cards, mailing lists, a lot of stuff that we're not going to have to do anymore. Uh, and it's, it's, it's a great project. And anyhow, there's a lot of features about it. But in the meantime, as that's expanding, that's going to be eating up the brand. If he, if he doesn't do the directors. Is the GIS is eating up a lot more over time. We, and the fastest the county's growing, we need more people, boots on the ground, going out, doing our appraisal. And if, quite frankly, you may need to hire as many as two people. I mean, if you hire within two more appraisers, just to try to keep up with the volume we got going on right now.
So in your twenty-twenty-three budget, did you have?
I have only a budget for the one replacement.
Replacement. So it's a replacement?
Yeah, yeah.
Who are we?
Not, no, right now we're kept.
Right, that's right.
Wow, you don't.
So you're speculating if we hire within, you'll be short one. So if we fill this position outside, we're, we're good in your budget.
Technically.
So we can't offer a position?
That's right. That's right. That's right.
You don't tell me.
Yeah, yeah. If you hire outside, yeah. But like I said, as the GIS continues to expand, threat does become my appraisal work. And she, I think is, this is going to be where it's going to be a lot more involved and trouble. So if you keep up with that, you can get that information.
Is there a way we can tell the, what were some applicants?
Yeah, there's, there's.
You could tell them the whole, tell them, decide what we're doing at the director's job.
Okay, yeah. I just told them to contact me after today's meeting and I said whether or not I'll be advertised early or not, uh, going forward. I'd like to think most of the executive session personnel is no more than session. Second.
So with the one dash twenty.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Section two.
Same side. We're going to move into executive session, gentlemen.
You want to get him present?
Tim present.
I'm going to have to, uh.
Hold on one second. I'm going to have to, I think I'm going to have to end the meeting here, folks. Everybody's listening. So, um, um, it's new now, so I don't know how, exactly how to mute it. So I'm going to end the meeting.
Thank you. Bye.
Yeah, bye.